Oh.
Yeah.
I was not.
Literally.
Cause I don't have my glasses.
I don't think anything like that.
I don't.
Yeah. That's really cool. He's got some more.
I got. Wow.
Yeah.
I like the golden people.
The reading.
Yeah.
On the. No, in the. In the red of the. Yes, they're blue. But lock is off because we're first. Book on it. You know, I was digging with it.
I got some good clues.
The meeting is called to order. It's, uh. This is.
Huh?
Six hundred. Six, looks like. Your side is six hundred. Alright, uh. I guess we got. Jan.
Here.
Baby.
Here.
Bisha. And Greg. Okay. Uh, we had no mayor announcements. So I guess our first one would be Dana Burkett.
On the agenda tonight, y'all have, um. Your budget amendment as part of your new business item two, but how are you amending a budget you haven't even codified or accepted? That was supposed to have been done back in October. I know y'all written it. But there's no, I requested the public information, there's no ordinance showing where y'all have accepted this budget. So what exactly are y'all amending?
Okay. Bill Duffy.
Just a couple of quick things tonight. Um, first illegal actions, I would like to ask anyone that has documentation and evidence of.
Thank you.
Illegal activity by anyone in the community, especially on the city council. But they should take that evidence to the proper authorities. And hopefully these people can be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. Otherwise, what we have here is just any windows and hearsay. Also, meet the candidates. Uh, the Jimbers having one on five two, and I'll get that information up to City Hall, uh. Uh, within the next day or two, and I would hope that the officials would extend us the same courtesy as they extended. Uh, to another group that I noticed has a sign up there. There, there's, I believe there's two different. Excuse me, there's two different, uh, meet the candidates, we had ours. Uh, scheduled a long time ago, and there's another one. All I ask is in the interest of fair play, you post, uh, both of them up there. Thank you very much.
Bill Duffy?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna speak on the agenda item, when the agenda item came up.
Okay.
Please.
No problem. I'm gonna have to make this. Okay. First, first I want to say something. If y'all are gonna be talking and bidding and carrying on during this, uh, meeting. Please go outside to do that. Okay. New sewer plant fence. I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses. New sewer plant, what's the last one?
Estus.
Estus. Okay.
Maybe.
That's wonderful, great, thank you. Okay.
Did you pop down?
Yes. And they've all. Basically, all, every one of them is apples to apples. Originally, it wasn't so, then revised their quotes. So that they would be.
So did we just get these today? Is that why they weren't in our packet?
Mm-hmm.
Two, yeah, all three of them actually, we just got today. Those are, there are two of them were revisions.
So this one replaces this one that we had.
The John Cooper.
John Cooper.
It's a revision, so. Yes, in fact, one of them I just got. By five o'clock.
Which one's?
We got three.
Three.
Which one's from the school? What's his name?
Anderson.
Anderson.
Oh, okay.
And he is. He is the lowest bid.
Is there something we ever have to give you every time?
Uh, we didn't advertise it, but I mean, we got three bids, so. We, we just, it's kind of word of mouth, hey, we need a bid, so.
Can I jump in here? I was, I guess, the other agenda item that I had. And I believe I'm not to participate. Just like that, um, there's the Texas Municipal Procurement Code. Are, are you guys following that? As far as this is concerned? Because I noticed a couple of things right off the bat, when you said you didn't advertise for bids. And I believe you should be, you should be getting sealed bids that are open to the, uh, to the public. And you haven't done that.
That's cool.
And that's, that's part of the statutory procedures for competitive sealed bids, which because it's over fifty thousand dollars, I believe you're supposed to do. And then, and again, there should be sealed bids that are publicly open. And have you, uh, have you prepared some type of a, um, um, RFP? Or some type of a, um, uh, specification that, that's uniform, or are we just calling these people up and asking for a quote? Because otherwise, I don't know how we can say it's apples to apples. I guess, uh, that's all I have, but, um, I believe any actions that you were trying to do tonight would, uh, would not meet the Texas Municipal Procurement Code, based on my understanding of it. Just pass that along. Thank you.
What we're doing is under T C E Q rules.
Doesn't matter, you still have to.
I'm sorry, we're not talking to them. Out there.
Okay.
We keep hearing now the city doesn't want us, but.
Uh, this is kind of.
We're not advertising, so I know we've been get, got sealed bids, especially major.
So let's put it in the paper and get sealed bids.
They could.
No problem with that.
I think they could actually just go ahead and put their bids. As they are in the paper. You are correct. We'll ask for that tomorrow morning.
What, excuse me, what'd you say? You were gonna put their bids in the paper?
No, sir, I did not say that.
Oh, I misunderstood, you got those?
Anyway, we can contact them tomorrow and have them do that. Okay, thank you.
I just would rather be safe than sorry, you know, that that's how you're supposed to, special major. Items like that.
Well, there's a lot of things that we should be safe, instead of sorry, that has gone on in the past too. Okay, so, next we'll do. You can do some action. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we table it till we put it in the, we follow the proper procurement. Regulations.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Okay, well, number one pump repair replacement budget.
We're gonna have to revisit the Wasinger bid. At a later date. Because it is not to replace the pump.
I'm sorry, Greg, what is it? It's not what?
Because it is not to replace the pump.
Okay.
It's just to pull the well and look at it.
That's what this.
So the diagnosis and that works.
Yep. And the other quote we got was, you know. For the pump.
So they didn't add the C and C with that?
No, no, that is, that's the only one they got in our same C and C.
Oh, okay.
Other company. So, what we're doing is, I guess we need to go through the Department of Procurement and put it in the paper and get take bids and all that. Well, go down, go real fast. I make motion table.
Any seconds? What are you gonna do then? There wasn't a lot of time, it didn't on the end either.
Well, I know, but this is an emergency water situation.
So we don't have to go through agreement for that?
What's the bid mounts?
Well, the thing is.
What are the bid mounts? Y'all already know the same with the bid mounts.
We don't have an apples for apples bid, doesn't matter though.
And there are certain exceptions.
If your quotes are under fifty thousand dollars, no, you do not have to go through procurement.
And then in an emergency situation, uh.
Literally, whole code.
At this point, at this point, we can't do anything with this anyway.
Oh, okay.
Because it is not to replace the pump. You wanna replace the pump?
No, we don't have to.
If we had.
If we have.
Let me ask you this.
Diagnosis.
Do you wanna spend thirty-two thousand for a diagnosis, or do you wanna spend thirty-eight thousand? And let them pull it, and if it's need, needs to be replaced, replace it?
Yes, sir.
Which one you want?
So Wasinger was just gonna pull it.
And look at it.
And look at, the other one was.
Then they're gonna tell you how much it's gonna be to do repairs or whatever.
Repairs or replace.
And the other company was gonna.
Replace it. If need be.
If need be.
Yeah.
And how much was that one?
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight, something. My dad.
So can, um.
Maybe, it's not on the agenda to, you know, go into that, so I didn't.
So we can't make a decision to, um.
Go with C and C?
C and C?
She says it's emergency, you can, so.
We gotta, I mean, we can't let her wrongfully. It has.
Oh, it has, you're right.
Yeah, so, I mean, you need to, yeah. Remember, emergency situations, we gotta.
Well, what you could do is replace it, and then after they pull it up, you can get the other guy to take a look at it and see how much it will cost to repair it. And then, you repair that one, you'd have a backup for the next time they happen.
Thirty-two thousand dollars, or something like that. That's ridiculous.
Why are they talking about? I don't know, cause I think they, I think they're trying to run it.
You're the one with the gap. So, please. Um, let me. Let me see if I can go off the C and C. I didn't, cause I didn't.
It wasn't in the last one.
No.
I'm a poor man.
And I just.
I don't have. I got my last one in the car.
Can you go get it?
It's not that thing.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'm a poor man.
Do we have a copy of it in the office? No.
Um.
Do we have, uh, from John Cooper? Oh, they're so famous, they're so. Oh, yeah, there's a lot of it. You're not telling me at the fifteenth, though? No, I don't think so.
Um, uh. Yes, estimate what it will take to complete the work. This one is for, it does have the motor listed on there. Uh, it's thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, forty-six cents.
Which one is that?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixteen, uh, forty-six.
That's for the same thing.
Yeah, the pump is twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars.
How much?
Twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Did they have a good reputation?
Uh. God, uh. Recommend them, so I wouldn't recommend them.
Was that thirty-eight thousand? Did that in, is that twelve thousand included in the thirty-eight?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm fixing to send this to. See.
Have you, uh, is there a way that you could ask Wasinger what theirs would be?
They don't know.
They don't know what the mounts are?
Well, they won't know, they won't know until they pull it out, if they're, if that's.
Okay.
Something they're gonna do.
So, but this one here that includes the pump. I don't understand how they can do, put it in their, uh, uh, price.
Why not? I mean, they're just saying, hey.
If you.
This is how much it is, if you do this.
Yeah.
Uh, can you?
Well, BS, Wasinger.
CCS Water Specialist Incorporated. Uh.
Um. The most, Wasinger's, it said pulling inspect with thirty-two thousand.
Yes. Just, just get the other in front of us, so we.
Yeah.
Know what we're looking at.
Such a fast start. If they're gonna make three plus.
It's kinda like a hotel, it's only got two people stay there.
Okay, out of curiosity, I know you said, he said, that pissed off, but why does it have? New well equipment quote, based on available well information, and then install, but none of this applies to the price.
It does, but at the time they, at the time they look at it, then they will apply that. That information. That will be additional. The original is just to pull it, do a visual inspection, and I think a camera inspection.
Yeah, they're gonna send Tyler to get it inspected. Transform pump to Tyler facility for inspection, drive inspection report.
If I'm not mistaken, that took forever, but one time, we getting it done?
Yeah. It was down three weeks.
Use the wrong hand.
Yeah.
You are good, thank you. Is this the same one that we just got, that we, we just wrote down the?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
And they're gonna do something similar, but, but they have given us all the calls right now. But they're gonna pull it, look at it. And give a full. Determination on what is, what's needed. And if we don't choose to do that, then we have to pay them for what they've done. But this figure here, it's an estimate. Is for a new pump. So the pump and the motor is gonna be.
The pump, it looks like it's seven, seven thousand, it's seven nine five.
But it goes along with the motor, though. So, if only the pump is bad, then it's seventy-six hundred.
Right.
If the motor's bad, then it's twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one. So.
You add those two together.
Add them together, if both are bad. And so. Uh, labor to pull the pump is sixty-eight hundred dollars. The installation of the pump is another sixty-eight hundred dollars, so. Anyway, um. We're gonna use Wasinger, their two, thirty-two thousand to do, to take a look at it. So we can, we can get a pretty good idea that our new pump and motor, that's gonna be another twenty thousand. Top of theirs.
Well, either one of them insured, one of them hasn't.
Uh, I'm sure it's, you know, whatever the warranty is on the, on the pump.
Yeah, but it doesn't say nothing on this, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, warranties.
Well, it did, they have the warranty listed.
Yeah. Manufacturer materials. Yeah, so whatever, whatever the warranty is on the manufacturer warranty.
It says the only warranty offered by CCS Water Specialist Incorporated is that. They warrant their labor and labor of third party directly under the control of CCS Water Specialist.
Not any of the material.
For ninety days.
Yeah, not any of the material. Yeah.
It, Wasinger don't have anything, even mentions of warrant.
Really, they're not warranting anything. They're just pulling it.
Yeah.
And when did, uh, did W, was Wasinger the one that used it, took so long to do? When they pulled it?
One time I had to send it to Terrell. Which I don't know, whichever one it was.
This one's gonna be sent to Pop or two.
And it seemed like it was forever before it got bad.
Yeah.
Um, they kinda kept putting us up with the thing. On my own.
Well, does anybody have a motion?
Just real quick, is there a confine, is there, is it available to do it? I'm just curious.
You're right, you're right.
Water went down the wrong way. Wasinger was coming out yesterday. Is when they were scheduled. And we. And we told them to hold off. So, um. They're available. I don't know about CCS, I haven't contacted them.
Is there? A way that we could ask Wasinger what a pump would cost?
Sure.
Okay. And. Water pump would cost, and I guess the motor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, uh. See, that's what they would add to the thirty-two thousand?
And the way we're gonna put it back in.
Right. We need to see that, uh. These people only have two stars?
There's five.
Five? Not two of them. Does Wasinger?
Oh, I didn't look in there. Did you say, what did you say, five?
Well, well, uh.
CCS is a five star.
Okay, that's what she said, I couldn't. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they didn't give us any. Any pricing on anything.
It's just labor taking it out.
Right.
Which thing's?
Pull an inspection. Now, they are gonna run a camera down there. And look at the well itself. And provide a report.
Say we went with this CC people?
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask them the same questions that I was wanting them to ask?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But they spoke to a camera inspection, I guess.
Yeah, Wasinger, Wasinger usually always does, I guess. CCS. It doesn't say that.
It doesn't say.
That they will or won't, yeah.
It's just not really on their list.
Yeah.
Just curious. It said four, four, five.
Four point five.
On the, there's two, uh, ones in a wheel, the one's in the. On the, there's two, uh, ones in Willows, one's in Tyler. I guess they're not far from each other? I don't have any idea. But the Tyler one had five.
Which one are we using?
Oh, this says Willows right here.
Is it their third party? Cause in their, uh, working and talking about third party.
It says Willows right here.
Ah, I see, you've got a different paper than I did.
That's Willows, Texas. Is that their headquarters? Sure, they, they're closer to Houston.
But Tyler's where they're gonna send the pump.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a five star?
Yeah, I figured that the pump would be sent to the pump company.
Not the other one?
Rebuild them and stuff?
CCS is five, Wising is four.
Four and a half.
Four and a half.
Yeah, don't forget that.
They ain't happening there for sure.
How many people?
Uh, it's, the four and a half one had thirty three.
And the other one that had five had how many too?
And the, uh, Wising or Tyler had three, and they were five star. Uh, for the difference in the two Wisingers are, other than two different towns.
Do you have something from Wising or Tyler?
No, I didn't see, I just, when I typed it in, it said Willows for Tyler. And I looked at both of them.
Okay.
But no, other than the pump or whatever was gonna go to.
Go to Tyler.
Right.
I know it depends on what needs to be done, but you don't want to, without looking at it, can the indicator turn around?
No, I think they can pull it in one day, I think is what he said.
It says that they have no control of the acts of God is what it depends.
I think he said they can pull it in one day and they can put it back in one day, it's just. Time in between, they don't know because of parts and stuff like that.
Does anyone have a preference? Jan?
All of those extremes were perfectly Wising in the past, working with them. You know, that they're familiar with their water systems, but I, I don't.
Well, I know CCS did come out and give a bid on number two before.
But you have that.
But they never worked on it?
They have never worked on it.
Debbie, do you have a preference?
Well. All the preference is gonna go around to the cost.
Cost of that will be.
It's not gonna. Be if I prefer this one over that one, it's gonna be the cost.
Well, I hear you on that, but, uh.
We don't have a. Set in stone cost, and we won't have until it's pulled and all that, yeah.
And they really don't.
Never gonna charge this thirty two hundred dollars just to pull it, or thirty two thousand just to pull it and look at it.
Right.
And then you're talking about another.
I don't see how it can be unless it's something very minor wrong with it. If we have to put a new pump in, I don't see how it can be any less than what CCS is. You know, I mean, a fifty horse pump.
Well, it's gonna be close around to that price.
Yeah.
You're talking about labor twice.
Well, I would think that actually.
And that's not even in Wising's quote of any labor.
Not, not to go back.
No.
Yeah, it, their, their quote is to pull it and inspect it for thirty two thousand dollars.
And we need to find the downtime, how long it's gonna be.
Well, it's down, so.
Well, I know, I know that, but I.
Turnaround time.
Yeah, around, yeah.
Take it down to Tyler, then you said it took a while the last time, they kept putting them off. How much more they don't keep putting us off on this one too?
Well, I, I feel like.
The other pump goes downward, dry, the LaDonia again.
Okay, so the CCS, they're gonna charge us, um. They're gonna charge us sixty eight hundred dollars to pull the pump. And then they're gonna, I'm, I'm sure there'll be some small stuff that goes along with it. But basically, that's, that's what they're gonna do to be able to tell us what, what we, if we need the above.
Yeah.
And what all we need.
It looks a bit like me a piece of drain.
Well, I, I mean, it, with theirs, unless there's something else drastic, and I mean. About the only thing it could be would be the, the, uh. The well itself, you know, there could be some damage to it, but it's gonna be added to either one of them. You know, um, but as far as pulling it and putting it back in. I mean, they've given us a pretty good idea that it's thirty eight thousand dollars.
But they're not gonna use the camera to check?
Well, they're gonna have to do something to check the well.
Yeah, they can't just install it back in here or anything like that.
They're gonna have to.
This is mainly their cost of their supply.
Yeah.
Yeah, the camera inspection.
Yeah, that's gonna be extra.
I would think, I hope.
I would, I would think, I would think either one of them is gonna do, uh, some type of inspection. In the well, but it does not say, that I see. That they're gonna run a camera down it.
This is just part of the labor.
Yeah.
There's no, nothing else on here, same way with his, it's pulling and running the camera and sending it to Tyler for inspection.
Right.
And then put the camera down there.
Right, that's why she, she's using the camera. The other one doesn't, doesn't specifically say they're gonna run a camera down there.
No, this, this is only just parts and labor.
We could ask that question, say, hey, how are you gonna know if the, if the well itself is?
Yeah.
Okay to put a new pump in?
Cause I actually don't know that we ever had it when they haven't.
I, I would.
Just, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't remember all of it, I know they had before, but I'm just.
I think that's an easy question to get answered.
Yeah, yeah. As a curiosity, with them only wanting to give a ninety day warranty, is that normal, you think?
Probably so.
Yeah, that's probably on their labor, cause the parts are manufactured through another company.
Yeah, that's.
Where they get them, and then they're, they're not gonna warranty another company's parts.
Right.
Yeah, you're talking about the, uh, call, have you, we heard anything from that water board?
We have, and we have received substantial money.
So we have enough to cover?
Absolutely.
Yes, uh, I guess I should read this then.
You can read it.
Okay, we have been, um, working with wat- the water board. And, uh, they have come up with, and located escrow funds for us.
Substantial.
I think y'all know what it is.
I know exactly what it is, it's the, it's the, uh, contingency money. It's just, it's called contingency money. I think I exactly what it is, it's what I was working on before I got terminated.
Yeah.
Y'all would've had that over a year ago.
Well, we knew you kept telling, or you kept telling the price.
That it was there. It's there, kept telling you it was there, it was there when Debbie was there, she worked on it.
Yes, we did, yes, y'all did.
So we'll be able to get it, whichever then we choose, we'll be able to draw down the money, or they're just gonna go ahead and send it to us, or?
And that's why we're working on their sewer plant too, to get that TCEQ happy.
And that has just happened, so. It's all news to us.
I think we had that done Thursday.
It didn't come Thursday.
Oh, no, I didn't say it came, I said find out.
It what now?
We found out about it Thursday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't get no money then.
So either company is, their viability is, or is how soon they could do it?
Find out really, have a phone call. I can probably find out right now.
Please do.
If CCS can. Can step in. I know, I know Wising was available yesterday, I know that positively.
I wish CCS had a description like Wising didn't.
As in?
You know, like it's telling.
We could ask them if that's on to us.
You know, what are they doing, you know what I mean?
Hey Todd. Can you, this city of LaDonia, can you tell me, are, when y'all inspect? Are, when y'all do your, when you pull the pump, are y'all going to run a camera down there to inspect it, or? Okay, uh, I don't see it on there? Twenty five hundred. Yeah. Okay, would that not be necessary? Yeah, they said they were gonna run it if they came out and pulled it, so. All right, what's your availability? Yeah, and, and do the work if needed. Next week. All right? It's, it's already, it's already Tuesday. That's what I wanna know. Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, uh, any more questions? Yeah, you already said you can come tomorrow, so don't back out now. After we pull you out, okay, um, all right, stand by your phone. I mess with you man, I will let you know something, thank you. All right. All right, thank you.
So we had twenty five hundred?
Twenty five hundred, run the camera.
Forty thousand, six sixteen, forty thousand. You don't have Wising on speed dial?
What do you need?
I just wanted.
Uh, questions for him?
Yeah.
Okay, why do we need to ask him?
I'm just wanting to know what his price would be, you know?
We have it.
No, we have it, just him pulling it, I'm trying to put it in and all that, and he can't use it.
He can't give us that information until after he pulls it, it, it tells us right here.
But if you add like the pump, like Greg's hood, probably around about the same amount. You add the pump and the, uh.
Yeah, he's not gonna, he's not gonna buy a pump for five thousand, and another guy's gonna, it's gonna cost him twenty thousand. You know, I mean, we gotta, we gotta kinda put that together.
So.
They're gonna make it pretty competitive if they do.
Yeah.
I thought we figured this would add twenty thousand, so I would, I would imagine it'd be like fifty eight thousand.
Cause you've got all this in between. You've got sixty eight hundred to pull it, sixty eight hundred to put it back.
No, I was actually talking about, uh, what adding the twenty five hundred to Wising.
He's already doing it.
Cause his, his has already got this on there.
He already has it on there.
The thing you'd have to add back in as an estimate would be your pump and your motor, oh, camera's already in here.
The Wising is a Riser motor too, Greg, the pump, one to fifty, one to forty.
Yes, um. It, uh, and he, he said until he pulls the pump, he doesn't have the information to tell us if it's a forty or a fifty. So he, he quoted a fifty, more expensive pump, so. So it would be covered, no matter.
Oh, I thought.
I don't know.
I thought, yeah, cause I want mine.
Yeah.
You want to get that?
I would appreciate it. Now, if for some reason we decide to go with him, we would have to ask how long do you? You know, the turnaround. This one here isn't gonna send it off anymore.
Not that we know of, yeah, I mean, he's gonna look at it, and if it's determined that it's bad, he's gonna replace it.
Just by looking?
Well, I mean, some of things it can be very obvious and some maybe not. But this is for a new pump. So it don't mean that they're gonna send it off to have it inspected and, and maybe refurbished or whatever, this is new pump. So at, with this cost, who cares if it can be refurbished? You know, I mean, at the time it's pulled and he says, oh, well, it looks like it's only this, maybe you just wanna repair this, okay. I'm just saying, it's already built in to replace it.
And how many times that pump been already rebuilt, rebuilt, rebuilt?
We don't know.
A lot.
Just hope again the last time they messed with it, when the water was down, rail was down. Just hope again the last time they messed with it, when the water was down, rail was down.
I like the way he's gonna write this up better, I think on what they're doing, but this here's just like an estimate, you know, it's all it is.
Well, both of them are.
Well, understand, but like.
That one's just written out, you know, like what exactly the.
You know, like forty horse price, domestic motor, four sixty, new forty-three ground cable, you know, there's no ground cable listed here. And then uh.
Well, that's what runs the pump.
And then the two twenty, two P M, four sixty, pump bowl, whatever that is. I, I just like the way he, they wrote it out better, but you know?
But the, but there's. It, it's kinda like, you, you, you gotta stop at the beginning. You, you gotta stop at pull and inspect it, that's where you stop at, cause that's what you're paying for. The rest of it, you have no idea what it's gonna cost. He's, he's not giving you anything. So I mean, it could be, you know, this cost.
He's gonna prove thirty-two thousand for him to pull it, look at it.
Yes.
Did you know?
I hope not.
Well, I mean, that, if you agree to Weisenger's, that's what you're agreeing to.
No, I like the way he wrote it up.
I understand what you're saying.
You know, cause it's uh for someone that that really doesn't know.
He did his boat ones.
Uh pumps, Weisenger more or less explained it, what they were gonna do, they just put it up here in invoice form, is what I would call it.
Because that's all.
Well, I mean, you got, you got another page here.
Oh, oh, I read that.
Okay, well, that kinda tells you what they're gonna do. It's kinda small.
Uh would you like your glasses? Alright, does anybody want to make a motion? And would we have to cancel, did, did y'all vote on Weisenger last time?
Yes.
So what would we do, cancel it?
Yeah, I have to.
Okay. Uh does anybody want to make that motion?
I'd make a motion that we. Go back to Weisenger and. Take them out of the picture and put CCS in the picture. With an additional cost of twenty-five hundred dollars for the camera. Um at the time uh that they pull the pump. So we'll have a better.
Knowledge.
Knowledge and information of what's going on. We still have to agree, at the time they pull the pump, what they're gonna do next, no matter which one it is. They're just giving, they're just listing out some costs of, hey, this is about what it's gonna be. And it is an estimated cost. I, I feel like thirty-two thousand to pull and inspect it when they're gonna charge us sixty-eight hundred here. And there's gonna be some minor additional costs, I don't, I don't know how much it's gonna be, but I, I mean. You know, we're, we're looking at twenty-three thousand difference, you know, in pulling the pump.
Right, labor to pull pump is what they've got there.
Right.
Labor to install pump, both sixty-eight. Would we give the um, you know, we know that they said they're gonna warrant their part for ninety days.
Their labor.
Yeah, but when we pay for it, do we get paperwork on the pump itself and all that, so that we know what the warranty is on?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, really?
We should get a set of paperwork and they'll have a set of paperwork. Cause if they have to come back out and pull it and warranty it, then they have to have all that information to get back another pump or whatever from the pump company.
Does anybody want to second the motion?
What was the motion?
Diane, do you have it?
Go, go back to the Weisenger agreement and change it over to CCS. We've al- we already voted to accept Weisenger's, so whatever we have to do to go back and, and change that and put CCS in there.
I agree, I'm just trying to do the work right.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what the word, words to the user, whatever, just.
We need to revise that.
Yeah.
Down there's work.
Yeah. Revoke.
Um, no. Recall, revoke?
That was snug.
Okay, um.
Okay, we're gonna have to make two motions, one of them, or we can make one, but I think it'd be better two.
Certainly, dissolve, dissolve the vote for.
The vote that was made on April, well, the vote that was, now, don't write this down, or you can write it down, but I'm.
Yeah, no, no.
Um.
Two.
At the meeting on April twenty-fifth, um we voted to have Weisenger start the um pump repair. April fifteenth, sorry. Um, start the pump repair ASAP. So we're gonna recall, gonna use the word recall?
I think so, motion to recall the vote.
Um, to have Weisenger, not to have, we wanna, yeah, we wanna make a motion to recall, um.
That was a regular meeting, right?
Right, mhm. Recall the vote?
Need to. Motion to recall the vote, at the April, I think, meeting. For. The approval of Weisenger.
To repair well, one pump.
To repair. Well, one.
Hmm, well, one, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's the first one.
Yeah, I'm gonna second that motion.
Yeah.
You're gonna second it?
Did you did?
Oh, you did, okay.
Um.
You're gonna talk about it?
Yeah, about it.
Yeah, take a vote off.
Jane, we can see that again, so.
All in paper, uh, uh.
And then the next one is a motion to. Approve. CCS. To. Um, repair pump one, pump one.
As a.
Okay.
You make the motion?
Yes, yes, yes.
You second? I will.
All in paper?
Uh.
Hmm, uh.
I'm sorry.
So you'll call him tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll call him right now.
I'll call him right now, he'll be here in the morning.
Why I say that is to make sure that he doesn't get a job tomorrow morning, I'd rather him to take our job tonight.
They're working in downtown city, so. Are there, where they're, where they're making.
Okay. Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion to Jane?
I'll make a motion with Jane that's so, no, too.
Your favor? Um, sorry, so. Thank you.
Yes.